Welcome, everybody. We'll call the council meeting order. We have a prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance, and we'll call pastor orders.
Well, I thank you for this time. I thank you for this opportunity. I continue to pray for the leaders in our community in this room and beyond that you give them wisdom and guidance. And I just thank you for the opportunities that we all have. And I pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice for all.
Thank you. Baker? Here. Bassett? Here. Mar? Bridgeway? Here. You have August 5th regular council minutes in your pocket. Are there any additions or corrections?
I hope we approved the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Jones? Yes. Baker? Yes. Bassett?
Yes.
Everly?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
You have two approved bills lists with you tonight. The first one's airbnb, and the second one's a宅房. Are there any questions about the approved bills list?
What's the tire wheels? $1,500 on the tires. Wheels there on the tower were split around. And it was seen in some of the $1,000 to get it certified.
The 13-5, that was just this building?
Yeah. This room, clerk's room, made another A C still working enough for that.
Nobody has anything?
I'll second that.
Jones? Bridgeway?
Yes.
Everly?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker? Yes. Under the board's request, they voted for the zoning appeals, eating that was up all just seven 2019 packets. So they approved them conditionally because they're not on airbnb at 118. That's kind of extreme. But then, have any comments or anything? I've never heard of them before. And we'll go on to the maintenance board. Next. Are there any other individuals that have anything to report?
Board, when is the next meeting? It says 3/3.
September 3rd.
September 3rd. It's great that the meeting now.
We're working on separate properties. Going on then to council committee reports. It looks like we got a lot of work on the table tonight.
We had a couple of things. We had toward the water plant a while back, the waste water treatment plant, and the first thing for the committee and our staff and everything. We had to stop quite a few things of sanitation that we wanted to address. We have been out with Jeff down there. We're going to get him some time to make some changes and a couple of things. He said he can get it done. So we're going to check on that down the road here. Justin's currently doing an EPA water sampling. Several residents in the community have received letters. She actually needs to get samples from those people. And the demographics of the community will have a cooperative mandated by the EPA. She has a couple of them that are hard to get through, too. For example, she drops them off at her test kit, and they can just leave it on the front porch, you pick them up the next day. So if you have received one of those letters, that test kit, please put that out for her to pick up. We greatly appreciate it. We'd get that submitted to the EPA.
But she needs notified because there is a six-hour window she has on that once the sample is drawn.
So please don't give her a call ahead of time once you get that around for her. We do have some, discussed some water rates, stewardage sanitation rates for the future. Projects coming into fruition. We'd like to have a full council meeting, depending on different projects, the EPA and the water treatment plan. Projects coming in here, how within the next year to, we have a water tower, and we're on my, that's Joe Brown. We have pretty good projects on the table. We thought we'd just bring the council together and discuss all of them. There's some grant options out there. I know we can't, and that with Pogomire's right, right? There's some really big grants out there. Two half-dollar grants, $750,000 grant. She said a lot of our projects qualify for that. There was a study done in the community, checking on her income levels. Or I think a 51.9% low income, which qualifies us to receive more federal state money. Any other questions?
Contact everybody to check out a date to me. There's a whole council to care about. From Pogomire Design Group, come and explain all the grants that are available to us because people need to prioritize what projects you want to do in the Village of Hicksville. And Kat, I noticed listed a lot of those projects out on his administrative report. So, you know, we need to make a decision. What you want to prioritize, how you want to prioritize those projects. She'll tell you, you know, what kind of funds are available for grants. It's not loans, it's grants. Because of our income level. Any questions for Mike?
Are there any other committees that have anything to report on before we go on to the administrative report?
95% of those projects come up, but they didn't make sure everybody had an idea what they were looking at. Otherwise, I got some traveling coming up, and you know, there would be two things. We're in the middle of our insurance renewal contract, going to have stuff here for the September 16th council meeting, but we knew like October 4th. He wanted to know if you need him here or not. He's fine not coming.
Does the insurance committee want to get him, you know, review anything first? Or do you?
There's really nothing changing with the policy, and it's packets and stuff. The only thing that's quick changing is that there's writing malicious person coverage. Somebody goes nuts out of the P D or whatever. There's special coverage for that. You said that's, it's the way this.
He's talking not like we.
Not like. Yeah. I meant a subject. Now, this is covered bad guys. So I said that's not going to get any additional charges because it's an extra coverage. Otherwise, it's pretty good drive. He can let me go. First meeting in September if you want him to come. And otherwise, we will be out doing limbs. Limit the storm damage only, and people taking clinic. Just bring it over. Probably later this week, they'll be out on that.
Kat, what kind of damage did we get from the storm?
We lost about three. I think you can't get over that yet. I mean, it's got a full sheer right on, right up front of pharmacy. It was just one of those. There are some bigger ones, just like the house they started with fire department. They lost a pretty good size of them. I just had the guys clean it up today, this morning. Lots of other limbs. I don't think any other major damage at other power beyond.
So you're keeping up with the tree trimming that's helping with? With you having a lot of damage done right away, so?
I don't think there's a lot of trees. They lose a limb no matter what. I didn't see anything major. What do you call it? Jimmy thinks he did. He's left the floor up there, gave the cops out overnight, thinking he set it up. That's supposed to be the best of the three. I was kind of surprised it didn't come back. We'll see how it goes. Might have to call somebody in to stay straight.
Is there any way to, can we speed up the bidding process for Chicago?
Well, the water line part, no, because we won't get our P W C grant contract till 1st of July. We're going to try to do these both at the same time, so I used to only come up once.
But you're scheduled, I mean, it looks like you're tempted for May of 2020.
Yeah.
By May, most contractors decide they'll take care of a job like that. They've got, they're getting up already.
They don't have much to sign or done yet, even on the storm part. We could speed it, but then if you award it, you don't get the grant. Contract probably paid to. Timing issue.
But these are, these are mandatory projects, right?
The water line is not. I decided to do it since we're going to have a right street mess.
But the sewer being.
The sewer we're attached to.
Whether we get the grant or not.
Well, yeah, that's, grants got to the sewer. I don't know how we're paying for that.
Lot of ups and busts. Okay, I just, I was just hoping that you could move a little quicker so we didn't end up with, I mean, if you're still bidding projects for the start of the year in May, June.
Questions? Do you want to go on down to the solicitor?
First things ordinance 2019 dash 09, a first reading by caption only, and ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance.
It's the third reading.
Oh, final. Sorry, third reading.
I'll second.
Baker? Yes. Bridgeway? Everly? Bassett?
Yes.
And first reading, a resolution 2019 dash 05, by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent water and sewer bills on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A and declaring emergency.
Since we don't have Exhibit A, you know how many are? I think there's, there are four or five or something last time. I had it back the last time, hell. But we didn't do this in emergency, but I do now because I got a letter from the auditor with her update, so we need to do it tonight. Any questions? Baker? Jones? Bassett? Everly? Bridgeway?
So second and third readings, a resolution 2019 dash 05, by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, directing Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent water and sewer bills on a tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A and declaring emergency.
Bassett?
Yes.
Everly? Bridgeway? Jones?
Yes.
Resolution 2019 dash 08, first reading by caption only, a resolution for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to rehire Troy Essex's village solicitor. Resolution 2019 dash 09, first reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent cost of weed and grass mowing on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
Baker? Everly?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
Resolution 2019 dash 09, second, third readings by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, directing the Defiance County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent cost of weed and grass mowing on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
Bridgeway? Everly? Bassett? Jones? Mar? Baker?
First reading, a resolution 2019 dash 10, by caption only, a resolution accepting the amounts of rates determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies, certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. You need to check out.
I figured they're going to have the same budget meeting.
Okay. So it's an increase to make.
An overall increase of like $2,500, mostly in the fire department.
One question. I'll second.
Jones? Bridgeway? Everly? Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Second, third readings of resolution 2019 dash 10, by caption only, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies, certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. So moved. Second.
Baker? Yes. Bassett?
Yes.
Mar? Everly?
And resolution 2019 dash 11, first reading by caption only, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community reinvestment area agreement with Karen Schmidt, L T D, and declaring an emergency. Point of background on this, this actually has been quite a bit of work in the last couple of weeks. This is our first commercial application under the CRA, and there's a bunch of different rules that apply. The residential CRA is pretty much if you file an application and you qualify, they say, yeah, you get the exemption and the paperwork's done and gets sent into the auditor. The commercial are a little different in that the individual terms of exemption are subject to negotiation. There's also mandatory notices that have to go to the school district in advance of us passing this legislation. Trying to get this all on board and get this taken care of as in dealing with Taylor over there, Schmitz are ready to get going on the lot out there, but they can't do any of the work until we get this passed and we get the agreement signed, so, and they're coming up when they want to start. So after this is done, then my intention would be to sit down with the committee and particularly Mike, who's an office officer, and identify a couple of the issues that we think we need to make sure we're on top of so that in the future, we're not scrambling around. In the last week or 10 days, we had to get the notices from the school. Jerry Hayes helped out. He just happened that he was going to the school board meeting last, last week, and I think he went there and they got the school to sign off the notice that they, they gave their 14th notice, the same with Florida, and they had to get them to sign off the notice. And they did, they did do that. So the resolutions around the agreement, I will email, there has to be a separate agreement I got the last bit of information from Taylor tonight when he, when he got here. So my intention would be to email that in the morning, the basics, and he's here if he needs any questions answered, what they requested and what's been proposed and go along with this, the seven years, 75% tax abatement. Obviously, it's a substantial project, if anybody knows what's going on there. If you got any questions, I'm sure he can explain it on that. If it is necessary, if someone's got major questions for us to deal with this, get this resolution passed, then we can get the agreement signed, and then there's certain things that have to be sent into the state because they track these. I mean, it was just going to be a little.
Mar? Jones?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
Everly?
Yes.
Bassett?
So second, third reading, a resolution 2019 dash 11, resolution, by caption only, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community reinvestment area agreement with Karen Schmidt, L T D, and declaring an emergency. So, second.
Baker? Yes?
Mar?
Jones?
Yes.
Everly?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
I'll get with Mike tomorrow, once that agreement's done. Like I said, there is a number of things that have to be sent into, and they need that, otherwise it would dawn a run into problems. And that, as far as the ongoing compliance issue, is another thing that the Defiance County Tax and Senate Review people, they handle, they might get the information on a year-to-year basis to make sure that it still qualifies for the exemption. Jerry handles all of the commercial applications, like the Defiance County, going over that. So it's been. Yeah, that's my recommendation then going forward. Yeah, he might as well be involved because he knows what the school board needs to consider, and as you're paying him to do things like that, I suppose he's a.
Other topics we need to.
We discussed this.
Sure, we can add that now.
We have talked about rental properties and rental properties taking over the community. We've got a great percentage of rental properties. Years ago, I. It got stopped down right away. Council? I've just touched on some subjects. Just got caught up in it. I don't want to spend a lot of my time on this if it's going to get stopped down. The last one did. But I think we need to discuss this. If anybody else has any other ideas. I just want to get a, got with General, General Allen, if I've got anybody on my team, don't go any further.
Why would you think this would be appropriate to send to the ordinance committee to help make recommendations?
We probably should because I just in glance at it, I think there's some issues on that that are probably of questionable legality, but there are some that are probably would be a note for consideration. I mean, the general concept behind them is fine, but I think you've got to be careful on some of the regulations and how far you take them. I know there's been other communities that have tried to even go farther than that and have kind of gotten, not only pushed back from landlords, but also from a legal standpoint of just how much you can do, control some of those things from a zoning perspective. But, I mean, some of them certainly would be well within our rights of trying to address.
So you're saying that needs to be zoned now?
Order?
There must be a order.
And I would suggest that maybe you consult with Troy over his comments about what particular of the technical he was talking about for this?
Set up a time and date after the meeting.
Ask Jones and Baker.
Me signing in on their meetings would be the little.
That's a good idea, sir. I'm just throwing this out. We're shooting down, just to put it out so you guys can consider it. We don't have property code numbers rental, or it says you have to change the property to rental. We don't have. There's an upside in classification. If I want to move out of my house tonight, I'm going to have to run. No, there's no, I have any regulating, that's, you're going to have to consider that.
Well, that's, that's where we need to make new laws and regs.
If anyone out there in the community wants to see a better starting, they can see Cheryl Smith to look at this. If anybody wants to look at it, add in here. Or if anybody's got any ideas that could help clean up this town, do Ron, Sheila, or Eric, who is in the community. That's all we're trying to do. That's what we're up to. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go on to the. No one else has anything to bring up at this time. Police Department?
Just a couple of things. One last night, we did have the power out, we lost power, I think, police department for about four hours. And we're not commissioned as far as in the office. We couldn't access any of our computers. The computer department, access our H B system, our cameras, our interview rooms, and everything, we're down because we lost power. We don't have a generator. I was just talking to Kevin, the meeting tonight, so I want to check into a generator as a backup.
So what did you do for four hours? Go back to the walk in the beat?
Well, we were out the back because the story did, but if we'd had anything that we would have had to make an arrest or tied something up or doing investigation as far as their views goes, we wouldn't be able to do that because we didn't have anything. Decided to pack up our lights in our office. Our backup batteries and stuff are working for the computers itself, and we cannot access our database, server database due to our hand or be able to type them out, or our staff or something like that. If we had, I'd go back to typewriters. I don't actually get reports around that. All our doors were, we had to unhook our doors to fill the access garage doors. We had no way to secure those. We had a problem with the cable last night, trying to get the door down, but it wouldn't go down all the way. Don't know why. Don't know why. So, so I think we need to look into possibly generating a backup, which means power so we can stay in operation. So, second thing is, I was selected to be part of the Ohio Chiefs of Police Committee that's been started through the Chiefs. It's a new committee, they've been, I received notice on Friday that was likely to be part of that, our district. The Pioneer Police Chief is also playing his substitute, sending our district northwest quadrant. So, I'm learning that. So all I've got.
Any questions?
Mr. Fox?
I have a question. I have a drag strip in the... A lot of people are asking, you know, through their... I don't know who does, I don't have it. He pulled out, I got him, and I got him. And that light and chill, that gas is... Five o'clock in the morning, six, seven, and then it's like, they're on work, and at night, when they get off work, then you can just...
I'll put extra control for us. I mean, I know we've gone down the street and haven't had any issues with the speeders that when I've been up there, of course, I do. Early mornings, if they want to get going work, we come forward, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions for the chief?
Fire Department? I just paid on the pool, still waiting for Elliot. He's supposed to be there in three weeks, and that's the first, and now they're giving me all this. The pool is closed. I talked again, and we're going to keep the pool full because I get when they inspect it, it's got to be up.
Any questions?
How many? Thirty-six hundred. Six hundred a day is what we're looking at. We figured by the time we let it drain out, then it's going to be filled, and we'll look at it and have about the same amount of water.
Thank you, Ron.
Does it get to a level of quick losing, or?
No, we don't ever want to.
Was your number this year higher than that?
Yes.
Hotter summers? Is it number one on the record?
Three days.
You have it's...
On the fiscal officers' report, we asked.
Good kind of appreciation for the work committee, the work committee, who like to present this part of the village for making that, for putting it in the park, so.
Nice. Keep out your papers.
That's perfect.
Thank you so much.
Well, the last time I was too proud, it's not as big of a...
Never happened.
Yeah, people fly.
All right, fiscal officers' report.
Hey, you have any of the funds status? You have a letter from the commission of like the control or list for the tier. We have an EFL bulletin that the lawsuit is still chugging along, attacking the tax. I've given a letter from the Ohio Ethics Commission, they're having a meeting at the Defiance County AMA, anyone's invited, and you don't need to ask me, Peter, anything to show up. So I have, um...
Anyone's on the counter?
I don't know.
Would we let up, can we let all of our committees, boards, committees get a copy of that, you know?
Oh, I've got it.
So that they have an opportunity to go here and...
I will do that. Oh, I have more stuff. Everyone has the Personnel Manual, I may have sealed, it's been updated. Inside, you will find the ethics update, and also three pieces of paper I need signed in return. One is that you receive the Personnel Manual, one that you receive the Ethics Update, and the third one is if you, in any way, shape, or form, drive any kind of vehicle that's still in town, I need you to sign that and give me a copy of your driver's license. Thank you. Two more things. I need you to do a vote for two things that do not require a resolution or ordinance that we discussed last time. One is the tiered waiver of insurance. So I need to vote on that. If you approve it. Does anyone have a question before?
Are you going to present, so that you haven't stated the way you want to, and you do that, and now I'm up on?
I did it last week, last week.
Your general theory, she said it was just four tiers. So, I moved with Cheryl and, and, well... You're not going to do it that way? How do you want her thing?
I'm not planning to go back on village insurance.
No, excuse me for the example. It's going to cost you more for me to have a group of insurance, you'd be paying me not to be on village insurance.
Oh, we can discuss raising it, we can discuss making it into tiers. If you want to raise it, that's a whole nother discussion.
Well, no, but I think, I think you're discouraging people from not being on village insurance. How do you understand that?
To encourage to use a spouse's insurance and not take our village.
Fifty-nine dollars a year, a lot cheaper than...
But Diane just said, if you want to encourage them to take their spouse, then the way to do that is by letting them get more money, not by less money. And here you have, I'm just using the...
I'm not agreeing, I'm not, I'm not doing that. You'd be paying me a thousand a year not to be on village insurance. Thinking, I don't need that much for my insurance, it's got to cost you, what, twenty-some thousand? So what incentive are you giving to cows of the milk? And you sort of pay the person by the, by spot, whether it's me, any other employee, the twenty-five hundred. I mean, to help offset whatever insurance and buying. So that's why I think you got to back, that's your aim. I think you're making it easier for people to sign up for insurance.
That wasn't the question. I just wanted to, I just want the tiers, the four tiers to match the four tiers of insurance. We never had them before till last year.
We have, we can't, we can't follow something if you don't even have the factors in it. But he's saying it's not right.
He's saying it's not enough. The Personal Committee, the Personal Committee did not discuss the amount, raising the amount. That wasn't the question. I wanted to have the four tiers built into the system because we have four tiers of insurance. The people in tier two and three don't fit, so I need four tiers.
Because she's not saying the four tiers have to be broken down the way... Off line the way it is, she's just saying she needs four tiers. And I don't... The amount has to be up to debate, I don't think. I don't know if you had any other... That would be on my case if I was going to do that.
Everybody takes insurance except your guys.
Yeah, and everyone, so, so now you can pass it, next guy coming along, I figure.
If you want to, you can hire, that's...
So I find one or two tiers, but on a long term, on the...
I'm not good with the...
Yeah, the tiers are great. I want the insurance, the insurance is expensive.
So, I would feel better, you know, with numbers installed. We can do that. But you probably won't get the time.
It's early for January.
Insurance committee, because there's so many tiers.
Because we have single persons, we have a family, we have an employee with a spouse, no kids, and we have an employee with their children, no spouse. That's how it's set up.
Of course, I have two choices. I have a four, current.
Not updated.
So, yeah, I feel...
The dollar amount that we offer, but it's just your system.
What committee are you comfortable with going with?
So she just wants it updated. I know. Going up, probably insurance.
Insurance. Please have a answer for us, proposal for next meeting of how you'd like to offer a tier.
Question?
How the insurance, how much would it save if we only saved around $20,000, something like that?
For a family.
A lot, it's...
I don't want a single repeat with me, but it's considerable. Say, my people's not, it's the...
Everyone else takes our insurance, we have good insurance, so everybody takes it.
He's all, yeah. I've got four that don't, don't have your spouse.
At this point, I'm really odd, that's why I gave you the example, that if you had another employee, that would be thinking, which pays for eighteen, nineteen thousand a year, instead of paying me a thousand. I don't care if I get reimbursed anything, that's me.
What? Oh, last thing, oh my God. Okay, the part-time, full-time to part-time assistant, need a vote. Mark Malin.
Need a vote to that?
It's not in the ordinance that's set the position, it's not in the job description. It doesn't say whether full-time or part-time. I want it to be for all the reasons that I gave last time. But I talked to Troy, and he said that we do need to have a vote, even though that it's not going to change our legislation.
Want an executive session before we go?
Yeah. All right.
Can I call the executive session?
Let's get through the...
Okay, it's fine, it's fine.
I think we're at this point, I've clearly brought to my attention that we need to release a couple of any kitchen people. So Linda McMahon is very busy with taking care of her partner and stuff right now, and she's, would prefer to have planning commission, and also, so I have Brad O'Gate and Bobby Sin in residence, sitting on the planning commission. And then come January first, we'll have Taylor and Lisa on that. But for tonight, I would like you to approve Brad O'Gate and Bobby Sin to the planning commission. And come up with someone for the development operation at D.C., and a couple zoning board appeals members, so if there's anybody that's in the community that's interested in serving on some of these committees or councils, please get ahold of me. The zoning board of appeals, a couple of messages would be...
I just asked them.
Were they ever separated, or ever together? I think they were, the planning commission, the zoning board, the...
What's the reason?
Occasionally, be things that, I would say they're conflicts or whatever, or they're circumstances, there may need to be two separate boards to consider the same project, different issues. That would be my guess, but that was well before I was...
What else that don't, the appeals, an appeals process to the, they've been an appeal process to, for any reason...
About that, criticizing appeals as if, if Mike would be going to, then they would go to the zone. Planning commission, I think you'd disagree with him, because the council, I think.
I mean, for now, it's always been...
I agree.
I think they were upgraded at one, yet split, but don't hold...
Maybe Troy can research. I can very easily, by looking back, can see how it's written, that the community's looking at it, you know, I don't know what I can tell you why it's a town council, so... So, I'm sure, so, anyway, in the meantime, we need our committee, so it's on, here to...
Brown, Bobby.
Yes, Esset, Everly, Richway, Jones?
Yes.
Now, we have, if you don't think we have someone in, over here that would like to make some comments and ask some questions, would you please, of the, you have a...
Okay, they asked for some input from the public about sidewalks, that's what I'm here to do, you know, and, um, you have three options, and the way I read favors, three options. Uh, you can, A, introduce everybody that's, that's owns property, pay for it, uh, B, you got a three dollar, tap on three dollars on your water bill for everybody, or C, spend the time at quadrants and whatever the amount of the bill is for the repair of that sidewalk, it's the amount of people that's in that quadrant, and if I'm wrong, I think, I will have, I will start with C, uh, maybe somebody explained to me, if there's a problem down there, S, that passes, and there's a problem down the road, maybe a week later, two weeks later, and if you've got, whatever the people are in that quadrant, and there's a problem with the sidewalk somewhere, and it's repaired, they're going to split that into the, that quadrant, everybody in the quadrant's going to pay for a certain part of that sidewalk. What happens if a month down the road or two weeks later, someone says, oh, in the same quadrant, oh, we got another, another job there to be repaired? Uh, going to get split up again for the people in that quadrant, pay for someone else's sidewalk again. That could continue on, as far as I care, it'd be a nice thing. Uh, I go to the...
I go, not me. Maybe somebody can answer this question, when was the last time there was money tacked on to the water bill for sidewalks? Was there a time that there was, there wasn't, it wasn't?
No, there's.
Was there ever a. A thing for just sidewalk, a fund for sidewalks.
Assessment. I've never known of this.
And. That's the one I would go with, I think if you got your own property, you own your own property, you can get a sidewalk. I mean, it's like, yeah, this way, if you got a roof that needs repairing on your house, or you need windows put in your house, you're the ones that had to pay for that. If you're gonna go out here and buy a house here in town, it looks like a sidewalk needs repairing. If you don't like, you need to fix the sidewalk, then don't buy the house. I mean, just like you go out and look at a house, if it needs a roof or a quadrant, you're gonna look at it that way. You're gonna look at if it needs a window, put windows put up. I guess sidewalks could be just look at it the same way as a roof or windows in a house, I guess. I think if landlords, I think. Rent a house, and whoever owns the house, that's who pays for it. If you're the resident of the house, if you own your own house, you just pay for it yourself. I don't think, no one else in the committee should have to pay for someone else's sidewalk or something like that. I don't have that problem.
Thanks, I do have a question for you though. Appreciate you coming in here and giving your input, a lot of people do, but I'm on the sidewalk committee, so one of the questions, I had three dollars worth, let's say three dollars, would generate money in the future once the board sidewalks got fixed, would be to add sidewalks through town too, like out towards the hospital, out towards El Grande, throughout areas like that. What would you give your input on, how do you put, I mean, do you go to the person that lives on. East Cranley Street and tell them, hey, you guys all have those sidewalks in, and who pays for that then? But part of that, part of that, what I mean, raise that money was to set aside money to add sidewalks to the town also. Do you have an input on that or thought? I mean, you go save everyone from Bundle Street to Columbus Street, that we want, you guys all are required to put sidewalks in, then how you're calling. I can see a lot of people that are fixated comes not being able to afford to do that all at one time. Letter or package that I think, I think you thought that did whole gate one. About how they fix sidewalks and then they give you like three years to pay, to pay for it. Let's say if we went to your house and said, yeah, put a sidewalk in, and then they hillgate, they're going through and making, giving you three years to pay for it. But our idea was kind of generating some money, so the homeowners, you know, we could add them where we think they need to be for the community to be able to use them without forcing everyone to put them in and charge and all. Any thoughts on that?
I would say if that's the case, maybe the three dollar one actually every month, but obviously it's every dollar bill. I suppose.
I drive, I drive bus out on.
I feel sorry for people that don't do that, and it's just like, I was one of them that come here most of the time. One of them, at one time, they come up here and gave my opinion out on Haver Drive. It would not do any good on Haver Drive. We were told basically, that's how it's gonna be out there, live with it. But, and if you wanna get down to the degree, you've got, it's like you got industrial drive out there. You got nice curves, you've got nice drainies out there going up, down the road for certain or anything else. We got ditches on Haver Drive, there mostly, county roads don't even have ditches as deep as what we got out there. Yeah. I mean.
There's been times when I've fallen off Haver Drive, and I can run off the road, you know, but. People do not, they're not. You cannot step off, or you're gonna be down that ditch, and I have fallen down that ditch in the winter time. But if I don't move, I'm gonna get hit. And that's pretty bad that people can see, I know they can see, but they don't get over, they come as close as they can to you. They stop completely. Like, maybe they aren't supposed to be able to kill sidewalk.
I say nothing bad about people on Bundle Drive, any other street that you're around needs sidewalks, I mean, I agree, around these sidewalks. And now my, my issue would be just to stick with, hey, I mean, people can't afford sidewalks, I mean, you're just gonna go to the alternative and pay for them, I don't know. I don't think it's.
I was just kinda curious for your opinion.
I just don't think, splitting people up into a quadrant and what I have to have and pay for everybody else's sidewalks, I mean.
They split it up to top box, they sent out the letters. To be paid them a year. And those that didn't get done, the village did them, and assessed, and their property taxes for like five years to pay off.
That's what we're doing, yeah. That's the way it is now, not.
Well, we haven't done any for years.
Curiosity here.
And that's our thought, we're letting zonings, let it slide as long as it has.
This is in town.
Ones that are in trouble.
How is that, how are sidewalks repaired? I mean, I'm not trying to get anybody.
When we did the downtown project.
Take my behind from business.
The business owner paid for the four foot against their building and the village paid then out to the street.
Village is the people that.
The property owners paid for the four foot like the residents do, and the village paid for the residents.
Just curious. No, no, I think A, as far as I got, I stick with, I think A, it's just my opinion, so like that's.
Thank you.
I, like I said, I do agree with what you're saying, with my people that are on a limited budget, you know, it's sad.
Greater number of our population here in town is getting to be like, like me, I know I look like a kid, but I'm sixty-five years old. And a lot of people my age and getting older and. And also, doing it as you're saying, for A, we will never accumulate any money to take sidewalks. Where there are.
I agree, and either sixty-five, sixty-three, I've had it replaced, but two knees replaced, and I've got arthritis real bad. But yet, no one really gives a rat's behind, and I'm sitting out there over trying to move a ditch, which is three foot deep, four foot.
Yeah, the ditch was there when you bought it.
The ditch was there, but it was only, if you go down to Haver Drive down there, we're down to Far End Downer by Buck Street, or Case Fair Mall, that ditch was just like this, that's, there was hardly no ditch on there.
That was, that's why there was nineteen feet of fall from Case Fair down to the other driveway and water would stand on the hill.
But you're saying when I bought that place, there was a ditch like that, no, that ditch was not that deep. The ditch was.
The ditch was not that deep, nor did it work properly, and that's, now, this ditch has worked properly.
Eh, it does really, uh, still, can't get grass to grow, most of the pitches out there, you still, the thing I accomplished out there was down, still the flood out of the road, out, just stays in the ditches, which mine stays in the ditch, so. I don't even know, so. That's, I'm not here to complain about.
Well, I appreciate you coming in.
Just inside of that, I had three people approach me, and they were all great. They said, you know, some of them had already done theirs, had done it years ago. That was fair to stay, keep it that way, it keeps the way we're doing it, and just kinda move forward and, first thing, and working with people that get it done throughout the community that it needs to be done.
I had, I had two that leave it like it is. And I think if I. Need four or five that were for the three dollars. And one sent me a text, it was nothing but a finger. And I thought that was real nice too.
That's number one.
Sorry about that.
Actually, you know, like a.
To respond to your question. I think that each property owner should put in their own sidewalk, if the hospital needs to put in a sidewalk, they should do that. If they can't afford it, should assess it to their taxes and have five or six years to pay it back.
The hospital does have a sidewalk, but there's nothing from about, you remember where Ewing's lived? There's nothing from Ewing's home to the hospital, so.
So the residents take care of it.
Yeah.
I still think the property owners, if they want a sidewalk, they should put it in. I shouldn't have to pay three dollars a month to have that sidewalk put in. They knew, the owners knew there was no sidewalks in there. There's no ordinance saying that you have to put a sidewalk in that I know of in the city. So if they want a sidewalk, the city wants a sidewalk, I think you'd have to work with property owners. And you already have it in, or I think you do ordinance that they can have five years to pay that back. I still think the owner of the property that needs repaired should do their own repair. If they don't, I think the city should come in, and I think it should be assessed to their taxes. I don't think everybody in town should pay for everybody else's sidewalk. Now, the question, did you think that the city owns, if you put a sidewalk in, residents put in the firstborn lead?
We were.
Businesses.
Where we have them.
Okay, who owns the sidewalks and the residents here? The resident or is the city, is it a joint home, or is it just strictly the?
Who resident owns it?
You all, I'll be right away.
Okay, I think the ordinance that you have, according to the paper, that the property owners need to put in their own sidewalk, need to do their own repair, assess it to those people on their taxes. Give them up to five years to pay it back. If they don't pay it back, then they'll pay a penalty when the property is sold, and that will be.